Good evening, welcome to the January ninth meeting of the Orange Government Access Television Committee. I'm the chairman Saul Silverstein. We have with us in town hall tonight Dan Fitz Morris, Robert Lim, Josh Rolinski is on his way in and but is available online. Mike Muddit is coming in remotely. I'm remote also and the assistant coordinator Chris Kelly is in person. And the recording secretary is Marlene Silverstein is coming remotely. Tonight's agenda starts as usual with questions and comments. Does anyone have any?
Just recognizing you introduced Chris as assistant coordinator, so.
I'm sorry, it's coordinator. It's been too many years. Chris is in fact the coordinator. Thanks for thanks for reminding me, Robert. Second item on the agenda is to approve the minutes of the December 12th meeting. Entertain a motion to approve them.
They're moved.
That was who? Rob and seconded by?
Dan.
Dan, thank you. Is there any discussion?
Just a spell check on the motion to adjourn at the end.
What's the what's the error?
I believe there's two Rs in my name.
Oh. How about that? You're right. Sorry about that. Okay.
That's all I got.
All right, so we'll make a motion to approve the minutes as amended by correcting Robert's name in on page two. All in favor of that amended motion? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Mike has to abstain.
How about saying I'm abstaining?
Who's abstaining?
Mike.
Mike has to abstain, yes.
Yep, wasn't at the last meeting.
Thank you, that's why he was not present last time. Okay, the motion carries. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the budget and I've sent everyone a copy of the budget. And we have spent at this point thirty percent of the total. Miscellaneous supplies about forty-two percent used. The coordinator salary is twelve percent, recording secretary fifty-six percent. Assistant coordinator fifty-three, that should actually be combined with coordinator because Chris moved from assistant to coordinator. And then camera operator is twenty-five percent. And then this is professional services cameras, this is also they they changed accounts and so it's kind of hard, they they move money around. So it says a hundred percent on that last line. Really, the twenty-five percent is I think the correct number of the new line at least. It's twenty-five percent of the old, no, a hundred percent of the old line, which is no longer active. Any questions on the confusing budget?
None here.
That looks good.
Okay, next item is the coordinator report. So we had in December ten meetings covered and one special event. Special event was the tractor parade. And so for the for the year so far, which is half over, we have done seventy-two programs, which projects projects out to a hundred forty-four for the year. But it'll probably be higher than that because we we do have higher normally higher meeting months coming up. In terms of hits on live stream and video on demand, live hits on the Telview Cloudcast facility was a hundred fifty-eight. Video on demand hits was thirteen. And here's an interesting number YouTube Live plus VOD hits, seven thousand six hundred eighty-eight. Which is an enormous increase of what's normal. And it's all attributable to the tractor parade and 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 the holiday.
Bless you.
God bless our parade.
If you take that away, I mean, it's still like way above average, so.
Yeah, it's like double or maybe triple something.
Once people once people get drawn in by the tractor parade, they check out some other stuff. That's great.
Yeah.
Yep, we our subscriber count went up quite a bit this month, too.
Yes, yeah, YouTube average monthly is by the way is eighteen hundred and twenty-six. And everything in the studio seems to have been operating well during the month. There were no outages or issues with any of the equipment. And tonight we are using a new piece of equipment, which is a Logitech camera device that will actually pick up anyone in the room. And it tends to focus on whoever's talking in the room.
Doesn't?
It may be having some technical difficulty.
It's set to a group setting, so we get the entire group and it's not going to move around too much.
Yeah. Yeah, and so when I I when you when you look, I did send the sheet of the the hits. And it shows a big spike at the end in December, so that's that's, you know, seven thousand number. And the subscriber count has been increasing. And we're we're up in in like around three seventy-five subscribers on YouTube right now. Any questions on anything in the coordinator report? No?
Just thanks tractor parade and thanks for filming it because clearly people want to watch it.
Chris, just a quick question on the tractor parade. How many people do you use to tape it? Because I know you were you were doing it live as well, right? Showing it or?
It was not live, it was I posted it about an hour after the event was over. I tried to post it as quickly as possible. I had another camera operator helping me, so there was two of us.
Okay, great. No, I I saw it came out great, just didn't know if it was streamed or not and I was out of town.
Shows, I mean, it's I can't do the math, but twenty-two hundred hits last December and seventy-six hundred hits this December, so it's huge.
Yep, okay. I guess we'll keep covering that event every year.
Yes.
All right, um, I'll take a motion to approve the coordinator report.
Need.
So moved.
Who who moved?
Me, Josh.
Josh, thank you, Josh. I have a second. Mike Muddit raised his hand. Okay, all in favor of approving the coordinator report, say aye.
Aye.
Sound unanimous to me. Thank you very much. Action items. So there's one, two, three, four open action items. The first two are procedure documents and Chris has been working on them. And he does have an example of one of them. And share his screen. We can see what it looks like. So this is he's got procedures and he's got photographs of what the procedure is talking about.
So this set of procedures are for broadcasting a meeting in town hall. And I wanted to start with this because this is the majority of what we do here. And this is something I've been working on and refining and it will continue to get refined. So the goal is to keep adding to this and to keep keep this format. You know, with pictures and and descriptions of how to go through all the steps. And the the goal is to make it clear and concise, so pretty much anyone could pick this up and and and, you know, broadcast a meeting. You know, this will obviously be accessible to anyone in in the studio that's operating a meeting. So if they need to reference something, it'll be available. And the goal is just to add more and more to this and create an entire procedures manual for all of the different things that we do here.
I think it looks great.
It looks great.
Is it? I mean, is this complete or do you have more to add to it?
There's more to add.
Okay.
Yep, so we'll get more. So this is just for broadcasting a meeting in town hall. There are other there are portable setups that where we bring things to other locations that we'll have to add to this. We'll probably add, you know, smaller types of shoots where we're setting up a camcorder on a tripod. Those that's a that's a little bit different than than a meeting in town hall, so we'll have to cover that as well. And obviously update things as things change, keep things current. My goal is just to create sort of a format and then just keep adding and and as I read through this, I always think of more things to add and and greater detail to to try to explain things, you know, clearly, so I'll continue to refine these as we go.
Do you think it would be helpful just to like maintain some sort of change logs and like dated, you know?
Yeah, we can have different revisions and I can, you know, anytime I make a new revision, I'll I'll make a note of that and have all the revisions saved.
Yeah, yeah, that sounds like a good idea.
Cool.
Good job, Chris.
Okay.
Thanks. All right, I'll stop my screen sharing now.
Okay. Chris has also been working on a schematic of all the equipment. And it's hand drawn right now and he's gonna use Visio, I guess is the name of the software to turn that into a document.
Did you get a license?
We did.
Yeah, nice.
Yeah. So if you want to see it, I think he's got a hand drawn copy with him.
I do, it's right here. If you want to feel free to pass it around, this is very rough drawing, but hopefully it illustrates things. Yes, the cloud is always at the top there. When I showed it up to the camera, you were able to see the the text behind the page, so it's not something I can try to and yeah, I saw when you looked at it earlier, it was a little bit hard to make out, but I will come up with a digital version of that, so it is available to everyone.
All right. Any questions on the schematic from those who looked at it or?
Do we consider these items closed from an action item perspective?
Would you say that procedure, that first procedure you showed is done enough to close this action?
I will have to add a few more things to make it final. So that's up to you. We can leave it open and I can show you another version next month. Or we can close it and I'll just continue to add things and I'm happy to show you my progress as we go.
Okay. Are there now? There was a second procedures action item that was started six months after that one. And I don't exactly remember which procedure that was on off the top of my head. Or if that was the same procedure or other procedures.
Is it update procedures for changes since publication, including effect of switch from Discover to Telview for streaming and video on demand?
Yeah. So the does the first procedure you showed have anything about Telview on it or Discover or anything? Or was there a separate procedure that that referred to?
Yes, that will be a separate set of procedures, yeah.
Okay, like there's gonna be like an after the shoot manual, right?
Right, close for, yep. There's gonna be essentially like what the camera operators deal with and there's gonna be stuff that I deal with, you know, like Telview's stuff that I would deal with. And this is what I've covered so far is mostly for the camera operators. So yeah, there will there will be more as, you know, covering some of the stuff that goes on in the background. You know, especially on the server, on the Telview server.
How much how so that that first procedure, the one you showed, how much more effort do you think it's gonna take to say, yeah, we're done? Realizing that it will have updates in the future.
Yeah, well, there's just one section that I had to add some more pictures. So I have a lot of text in one area. I wanted to fill in some of that with pictures and balance it out a little bit. So that, I mean, I could send a finalized copy by the end of the week for sure. It's there's not much left.
Yeah, I mean, if somebody if somebody can, Chris, if somebody can pick up that document and record a meeting, then I think it's substantially complete, right? If you want to add pictures to make it prettier and easier than by all means. If it has all the detail in it, then let's consider it. Let's consider at least that line item one done. Leave the Visio and leave the post procedure, post production procedure manual opened.
All right, I'm good with that. Yeah, I I think we're we're there, so.
Okay, okay, we'll close that one out. The schematic. Do you think you'll have that done converted by a Visio to by by the next meeting or?
Yes.
Okay. And then the last item was the you were supposed to, we're going to draft a memo to town departments informing them that all gets available, broadcast any of their events. And the last thing we said was you had discussed it with the first selectmen and you need to address some minor comments you made. Are we done with that?
The comments, I have a a version that I want to send out. Last week I was away for two walls. I took some vacation time, so I'm playing catch up this week. And tomorrow I was going to just get the list of people, the departments from Ann and send it out.
You're gonna send it out tomorrow within a week?
I can send it out. I can work on sending it out tomorrow. I will make a goal to send it out tomorrow. And hopefully we can get that done by the end of the day.
Great, and send send the committee a copy, please?
Sure.
All right. Any other questions on the action items? Nope.
It's the end of the action, please, so.
Have to come up with new ones?
We maybe. Not now, maybe next meeting.
I have new things.
Right, hang on a second.
I don't know where my new things fall, if it's an action item or I don't know where I don't have the agenda in front of me, so I don't know.
That's okay, you, um. They're actually, why don't you bring it up now and depending on what what's the what's the new item you'd like to discuss?
I would like to discuss a few new things, actually. So first, I was curious to get everyone's thoughts about developing a podcast, an Orange Town Podcast. Which would be produced or however you would like to call it at town hall. And it would be like, you know, things that are happening around town, interesting things about town, interesting people in town, stories, all sorts, all sorts of things. And I wanted to see what people's thoughts were. That's my first, my first thing. If this is the the time to discuss.
Well, Josh, podcasts remain imminently cool all the time despite.
I lost my audio. I'm walking into the podium in a second.
Oh, well, I'll just vamp while you go. I think it's a fine idea. I don't, there's lots of questions, but people do listen to podcasts.
Yeah.
That's all I wanted to say.
I'm coming inside right now. Yeah, I mean, while he's coming inside, I mean, my biggest concern is typically a podcast, it's really built around a person that does like interviews, like you said, right? You interview somebody that is interesting in town or or some department that is doing something new, you know, the OVA, the Orange Volunteer Fire Department's hundredth anniversary, all that stuff. So it's just a matter of finding the right person that is dynamic enough that can do those those interviews and, you know, draw draw people in.
Who would who would run this?
I don't know. I mean, if people were very interested in doing this, if there are, I don't want to drop this onto anyone's lap. But I thought it would be you know, if it was somebody on OGAAT who wanted to do it, or we could look for people in town or I don't know, I mean, just a thought.
Reminds me of the Town Talk, so remember we were trying to do that for a while? Remember the Town Talk?
Yeah.
We did them for a while.
Yeah. Many years ago, we were doing like interviews, I think, with people in town hall. And we had the, if you look into the OGAAT studio, you'll see this blue curtain. We used to have chairs in front of that blue curtain where people could be interviewed.
I mean, my my thought was something to the effect of not too frequent because, you know, you're you're just not, nobody's gonna have the time for that or I doubt people are gonna have the time, but you know, if it was like a once every two weeks or once a month kind of podcast for like thirty minutes to sixty minutes and you know, I think it would be, it could be an interesting thing that you know, we could get community involvement. It probably speaks to a lot to our mission. Everybody and their mother has a podcast, why don't we? I mean, Dan has two podcasts.
Your mom's podcast, by the way.
Thank you, it's it's she has two of them, but thank you. Yeah, you know, it just, it's just I I thought it would certainly fall under our jurisdiction as the government access television group, so if there's enough interest, I could put together some more concrete notes for next month's meeting. We're not obviously under a deadline, but that was that was my first thought, so. I mean, is this, am I out of line here or is this something that people think like if there's traction, we could run with it?
I mean, I don't think you're out of line. I think every podcast that's ever existed has one thing in common, which is somebody who's like, I'm gonna make a podcast happen. And like, do we have that person? Or is your goal to find that person and empower them?
Yes. I mean, it could be, I if if there's enough momentum, I'm happy to be one of the people doing this, but I mean, if if we open this up to the community and there's like four people that are very highly qualified and very interested in doing this, I I don't need to, this is not like an ego thing for me, it's you know. But I'd be happy, I'd be happy either way.
It'd be interesting to kind of hypothesize some criteria. Like what what kind of questions do we ask? What would be the subject like? And kind of come up with jot some some things down, some different ideas on what we would potentially talk about.
Like categories of talk.
Yeah, yeah. So that might be a place to start. And I don't know if I'm the one, I I I I think, I mean, I'm happy to interview people. I don't know if I'm the best fit for that role, but I'm certainly happy to come up with some criteria to, you know, come up with a sort of a premise for for what it is we're doing.
So so Josh, would you would you like to put together some notes and get some meat around this for the next meeting then?
Absolutely, let me let me make my note of this right now. Absolutely happy to. That's my first thing.
Okay, yeah, so I was I was looking for where this belongs in the agenda. It actually probably belonged under questions and comments at the beginning. I know you told us about it before the meeting started and I just forgot, I'm sorry about that.
Just make a new business.
We don't have any business on the agenda, but it it can go under comments, I think, in the in the in the minutes, I think.
That's where I'll put it.
Are we ready for my next thing? I got I got three more.
Whoa, I don't have enough room, I am no paper. Okay, go ahead.
So next thing I was thinking like most of us, we, well, maybe not Chris, but most of us kind of grew up in an age where your local government access channel had like local people producing TV shows at like nine PM and it was like a a woman doing yoga or a guy doing, you know, like Bob Ross, right? Like doing paintings or somebody, you know, reading stories to kids. What what is the possibility or the interest or the thought on having that be part of OGAAT's repertoire, like local Orange people who want to create and have OGAAT distribute their government access television show?
So they produce it and they just give us tape and roll it?
Or we assist with that, you know, for and I mean, I don't know if it will be pro bono or a nominal fee to cover expenses of of camera operators, like I don't know, but I I feel like there's people out there in the community that probably have some kind of really cool idea that or a really great hobby or really interesting skill that they would like to make a fifteen to thirty minute TV show about that Orange Government Access Television could produce or assist with and then play on a weekly basis or a monthly basis or whatever.
So for this one, I think you just have to be careful of the the PEG mission breakdown, right? So you're hundred percent right that, you know, grew up with those those programs, but that was all under the P, the public access portion of PEG. So there's public, educational, government, under our charter and stuff in our documents, we have to, it's something in order for it to be involved, it has to be some kind of government connected. Now, that's pretty easy to do. We have a Parks and Recs department, we have social services, we have senior center, they're all government funded. So if any of those groups want to do that, I I think we we are, that's we're fully in our in our realm. I think it's a little more challenging when you invite Joe off the street to say you want to make a yoga class and we'll we'll tape it for you. But if, you know, social services or Park and Rec or anything want us to to do to do that as part of their programming for the for the community, I I don't, I I think that's a great idea.
So several, by the way.
There are also several town organizations that are supported by the town that could be included.
Yep.
Are they also receiving the memo from Chris inviting them to create content?
Yes, they, yep, so Community Services will get that memo.
Yeah, so yeah, Mike Mike brought up the the actual point and that's that we are government. And so unless it's government related, it's it it shouldn't be on government access, it could be on public access, which I don't remember if it's channel seventy-seven or seventy-eight. But excuse me?
Seventy-seven.
Seventy-seven, so so to be on seventy-nine, it really needs to be related to town government or supported by funded by town government. I think we've is the rule we've used in the past because we we have had people in the past say, hey, I want to demonstrate yoga on on your show on television and I sent them to, you have to talk to, you have to talk to public access, not OGAAT.
Yeah, and you get it's it's a it's a weird slippery slope like because then you have religious groups that will get interested in everything, so it's a it's a very, it's a it's a a more important line than anyone thinks.
Yeah, and our policies and procedures actually say we do not show religious content, so that's definitely off the table. Unless it's mentioned inadvertently or in passing during, you know, some other meeting or something like that.
Yeah, churches asking the town for permission to use the green or something.
Yeah, so, yeah, so like like if the entity that's producing it is is funded by the town, then it's probably okay. But again, we would have to, Chris would have to make that decision because that's part of his job description. But unless it unless there's that government connection, it's it shouldn't happen on OGAAT.
Like during COVID, we were asked to showcase things that would normally happen in person in the community center. So we had some arts and crafts related events that really wasn't able, they weren't able to facilitate that during COVID and and so we we they used OGAAT as an outlet to you know, to to show arts and crafts demonstrations and how to make different things. And we have not filmed anything since then and and I keep showing the same arts and crafts rock cactus video that we made. I thought it was really good and.
Cherry cherry yoga, cherry yoga stays popular.
And the church exercises continues to be popular. So I'd like to, I'd like to maybe reach out to them and hopefully this memo reaches them well and they can provide some input as to what we can, you know, do to to maybe, because I know there's a a big elderly part of the community that does watch OGAAT and and does tune in and I'd like to cater to them and and provide content that would be enriching. And and just kind of, you know, showcase more of what's going on in the community center on OGAAT to kind of. On O G A T to kinda, uh, you know, for people that can't get out and aren't able to make it to the community center as often. Uh, at least give them some, some more enrichment that, so that they can experience it from home.
Yeah, I was on the say, so if I'm getting the point for, right, like if you, this idea makes sense if it's like. The senior center or Parks and Rec or youth services is like the conduit for recording the piece. Hundred percent. Or even like the country fair, I was, the country fair is what I came to mind right away, right? At least like amazing people who submit things to the country fair every year, but if they wanted to like partner with us to like. Like, how do you knit? Or how do you make that thing that you've.
Skill to learn, you know?
Yeah, yeah, but like you just need a sort of, rather than just like come one, come all, it has a civic government relationship with one of these. Committees or, or, or town functions.
We ready for number three? So I may be completely mistaken on this one, but you were talking about how. We're supposed to be more government focused. How about? We're, I, and I realize that we are quite a ways away, but we're going to have a local election. In November, we're gonna have multiple boards, we're gonna have a, a slate of candidates. Is there a possibility that for the month or the month and a half before the election? Any candidate who is running for any of the local town government positions. Or Board of Ed or, or whatever it is, gets a thirty second spot. That all of the, you know, all, all would be put together into a block. So let's say there's a total of forty candidates or fifty candidates, and, and everyone gets thirty seconds. You have twenty-five minutes of content that can be looped once every six hours on O G A T. Like basically just advert, you know, e- equal opportunity advertisements for anybody who is running for. A government, local government position.
Does that comport with our policies and procedures?
Not sure. Normally, we, we broadcast the candidates debate and that's usually just the first selectmen. I'm trying to remember if we've done anything else related to that in the past, now, it's just not popping into my head right now. Uh, but we have to be kinda careful with that, because there's, i- if, if people don't get their chance. Um, for whatever reason, there may be issues, uh, so we have to be really careful about how that gets done. Uh, it shouldn't stop us from thinking about how to do it. Um, but we have to, again, read, we read the policies and procedures and just make sure it conforms to that.
Well, I mean, there's definitely, there's definitely like a significant amount of time between. When the candidates are declared for the positions that they're running for. And election day, it's a significant amount of time, so I don't know off the top of my head when it is, but let's say it's August first. And the election is not till November first, you give any candidate from August first. And these are tentative, obviously, like dates, there, there's no research behind them. But you give everyone August first to September first to produce their own thirty second. Clip of their advertisement for why they're running for office for that particular position. And then as of September first, you got your block of all the candidates and you just run it on that loop for September, October, and the first week in November. This, this is just a thought.
I, I, again, I say, I say we have to think about how to do it so that it's fair to everyone. And doesn't violate our policies and procedures, so let's, we got some time to think, let's do the thinking and see if we can put something together that might work.
Okay.
And I think to take it a step back, just should consider. P S A to vote locally.
Yeah, yes, definitely this year, we'll just advertise, you know, uh, participating in the local elections, I think that's important.
Independent of this idea, yes, absolutely.
I guess, go ahead.
Chris, if you could get like younger people to do the P S A, that would probably be fantastic. Because the younger people do not come out to vote. They wanna do it electronically and there's no electronic voting. Not in this state anyway.
But actually did that, wait, I mean, this is, I don't know, I know we're top of the calendar year, right? But maybe we could next meeting, look at those things that are coming up. With, you know, both the elections, right, the budget referendum, the, the Amity referendum. And there's three votes in town every year, and so we could probably forward plan doing. P S A's or video grab, whatever we wanna do to get that out there for folks. And that's always nonpartisan, right? I mean, there's nothing risky about that, but at least if we do that bandwidth wise, we could plan on having them. With plenty of time to go.
Marlene, do I count as that younger person category? Cause I'd be happy to be involved.
I think Chris is young and younger, probably about as old as they wanna see.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine.
I mean, I just remember from working at the registrars, they would go to the high school. And the registrars were way older than me. And they, they, yes, they signed up some of the students, but not many. Because they didn't wanna see old people trying to get them to come out and vote.
I mean, I'll, I'm with you, Marlene, and also the budget referendums and the local election year, hardly anyone comes out to vote. Every spectrum, so we, we can't underdo it as far as that is concerned to make sure folks are aware.
I mean, you could do several different P S A's using different age groups. I mean, you can go to the senior center and have some seniors talk to other seniors to come out and vote. You can go to someone in the younger parents and middle aged parents groups and ask them to do it. As well.
And, and a version of this idea, perhaps, Josh, that's. Within our better control, as if in the P S A video for the local election. It was really clear, like, these are the photos and names of the candidates running for all of the positions, that is. We could do that in a nonpartisan way, because we wouldn't be relying on people to send us content. Or to create content for them, but it could be informative for people who have no idea who actually is on the ballot.
Sure.
But then we don't need to worry about this being perceived as partisan, it's almost like animating the ballot. Pretty easy to do that and not be at any risk of.
Yeah, but what I would suggest is, uh, specific to your ideas, check the policies and procedures. It just seems like we're getting involved in something that might be a little thorny, um, but I guess we can start with that.
I, I don't, I, I think, I, I think, I think we, we can figure out a way to do the publicity, that's fine. Um, so I, I don't think that's gonna be an issue. Dan, Dan, can, can you either lean forward or move into the next chair, because this device is not picking you up? See what you look like.
And, um, once Josh checks the policies and procedures, we probably should. Run it by, um, the town attorney to see, to make sure we're not violating any state election laws, which are.
Yeah.
Extensive.
Yep.
Does that sound fair?
Yep.
Yeah.
You have another idea?
Yeah.
All right.
Um, I don't think this one's gonna work, but we just, you know. We have so many local, orange athletics organizations. And I didn't know where that fell under as far as our relationship with that, like Parks and Rec or whatever.
Like Warren Soccer, like.
Orange Soccer, Orange Little League, you know, Amity Youth Lacrosse.
Are private, are this private entities?
All right, if they're government funded, if the town of Orange kicks in funds. Then there's a case for them being able to show stuff on O G A T.
Uh, but I, I, historically, I, I could be wrong, but I think Orange Soccer and Little League historically are not government funded, they're self-funded.
You're right, you're right.
But.
And I don't think Lacrosse or Amity Swimming is either.
Yeah, same thing, yeah. And, um, I think field hockey has a presence too, but yeah, I think they're all independently funded.
Yes.
Are we getting any kind of, any kind of government affiliation?
I mean, if Park and Rec runs a league, then we'd be fine, but I don't, I don't know of any. Per se.
Is there an idea?
Just to actually broadcast, you know, games or matches or events or whatever, but. If it goes against our mandate or outside of our mandate, you know, that is what it is.
Yeah.
Sweet, if it's on that one, it's okay. That was number four, that's it, that's all I got.
That's it, okay.
No, no, Josh, you're great.
And I used to, I used to, I used to teach total quality management and, and our first rule was all ideas are good ideas. So you accept them all, then you, then you, then you discuss them and figure out if it really is, you know, something you wanna do.
Okay, we, we got four to work on.
Right. Okay. So next item on the agenda was cat grant, there's nothing new since we, we've spent all the money from the last grant. Haven't not yet received a new grant or an application for a new grant. And keep tuned. Uh, equipment inventory, I don't believe we've gotten any new equipment since last month, so that. Any updates, um, are finished on that? I do believe I sent you the latest and greatest inventory that I had, Chris, right?
Yep, I have that.
Okay, um, committee vacancies, I have not heard any progress. Uh, from the first selectman, if he's found anyone.
Uh, question.
Yes.
In terms of the student representative, is there specific criteria that you recall? I mean, I guess I could check the. I suppose we could go out and try to recruit somebody, but I just don't know if there's like a minimum age or a maximum age or what kind of student.
I joined at fourteen, so I don't think there's that, the minimum age, it's not, it's not paid.
I think the town now requires sixteen.
That's if they're paid.
For being paid, but I still, I think even the youth, the youth, um. Youth services, um, student advisor or liaison, whatever they call them, is a, at least a junior in high school. Not younger.
I think Mike was in junior high when he started with us, right?
But is that, but, but I've been interested in this too, I just keep forgetting about it. How is that person appointed? Is that also appointed by the first selectman?
Yeah, first selectman. But we can always, if we have someone we think could, you know, should be on here, we'd like to have on here, we could always recommend someone.
Yeah, I mean, it's a non-voting member, it's not really controversial in any way, shape or form.
Yeah, uh, thank you.
Okay. Qu- uh, coverage of additional board meetings, so where are we with that?
Fred Wolf Park, I think, um, Suckman and Corangelo is good to go anytime. What was the challenge there? We just needed to make you aware of when the meetings were gonna happen?
Yeah, I, I'm not even sure when their next scheduled meetings.
Do they come in the, is that listed in the email, um, sorry, every month, I think Mary Ellen. Mary Jane, Mary Jane, sorry, um, sends out a list of planned board meetings?
Yep, okay, so there is, every year in December, we have to send in a list of our upcoming meeting dates. For the following calendar year, so the, the town clerk should have a list of all the. Regular meeting dates for all the committees, so that should be available from the town clerk. You don't have to wait specifically for the month for when they actually set the meeting, send out the agenda. Right? So you, you could, you could find that out from, from the town clerk, what, which committees, what days the committees are supposed to meet for the entire year.
Right.
Robert, excuse me, just a second, so what, what committee did you say was okay with us recording?
Uh, so both Fred Wolf Park and the Library Commission are both okay, I need to, um. I thought the Library Commission said February, but now I've heard it might be January, so I think if you're okay with it, Chris, I'll just connect you with. Kathy, I think you know, and, um, Ned, who's the new chair of the commission and just have them express. And they would prefer. Um, they meet on Thursdays, I think it's actually the Thursday after this, um, in general, does that work?
Yeah.
That doesn't conflict with anything else?
Nothing, uh, here, no.
Okay.
Yeah, no other meetings that night.
Okay.
Are those nighttime meetings or daytime meetings?
Nighttime meetings.
Okay.
Seven.
Seven, I think, yeah.
Yeah. And was there, were, Dan, were you also working on this?
Yes, but I have not asked anyone over the holidays about any of their meetings. But Chris, would it be helpful if I tried to get the committee dates from Mary Shaw, or do you wanna do it? Ask her, I'm happy to ask her, but I think that would be super helpful to, for us to have the list, so we could, yeah, be aware of. What's coming, so we could, you. Especially as the memo gets out, at least it's out, everyone knows, but then I think if we can help you support just some gentle nudging with groups to say, oh, you have a meeting coming up in March. How about we, right, try out a filming? Or if you could bring the list next meeting, then we can take a look at it and take it from there, or whenever you have it, send it in, yeah, I will, uh. I was watching Mary about that, for sure.
Which list, like the list of every?
Yeah, like what the schedule, the current schedule of the committee and commission meetings for the twenty twenty-five calendar year, does that make sense, Sol?
Yeah. Okay.
It's also a good way of figuring out which ones are actually active.
Yeah, so there'll be a list and, and, you know, meetings get canceled like the week before, two days before. So. The meeting doesn't happen. Okay, uh, uh, are we done with that?
Yep.
Okay, next is bylaws, so you all should have a copy of the bylaws. That we discussed and finalized at the last meeting online on the Google Drive. And I ran them by the town attorney and I think he sent everyone an email. Sent me and I think the rest of the committee an email yesterday saying the language is fine. So, um. I'd like to vote to approve them. And I'm just looking at. What the requirements are here. I think we just vote. To approve them and then we'll, we, I think we have to send them, according to the town attorney, we have to send them to the board of selectmen for their approval. So, uh, just may quickly run through this, see something, officers duties. I was looking, amendments have to be approved by two thirds vote of the members present. Notice of the proposed amendment must have been emailed, mailed or otherwise provided to each member of the committee. At least ten days before the date on which the actions taken, so just if, if this was an amendment, we've met all of those rules. All right.
Oh, we're, we're not bound by the draft bylaws, right, we'd be.
Not yet.
Yeah, not yet, I just wanna see if we were, but if we were in conformance and we are, if we vote on it tonight.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve as the O G A T committee our, um, our bylaws as, as presented.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Josh.
Josh, dude.
Sorry.
Uh, do we know if Gary had any thoughts that he wanted to share about this?
Uh, he didn't share them with me. So, that being said. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yeah, sorry, I'm just looking for essentially type those, um. Which I believe I found one.
I am the king. Hey, hello.
Um, so under officers and duties, um, this says there shall be two officers of the committee. And then there's a period and then a chair and a vice chair. Um, I think that's probably should be a comma.
Yeah, it should be a comma. I'll fix that.
Give me one minute.
Hmm.
Okay, yeah, that's it.
Okay, so.
I will amend my motion to say as amended.
As as corrected?
Yep.
As corrected and seconded by. Josh, you want to second it again?
Yes.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And I, everybody voted yea. Yes, thank you.
Well, thank you, Sal.
Put that one in the bugs.
I will send a copy of this to the um administrative assistant to the first selectman and a copy to. Uh Attorney Marino also and ask that that be put on the agenda for the next Board of Selectment meeting. Uh, I don't know if I'll be available to be there. Uh unless they want to. I just don't know at this point. Um, but we'll figure that out as we get closer. Okay, thank you. And the last thing was the job description. So the job descriptions, there's three of them. Uh, this coordinator, assistant coordinator and camera operator. And um. Two of them are existing, the coordinator and assistant coordinator are already existing and we're just modifying them, bringing them up to date. With changes since they were written years ago. The third one was recently generated. Mike used um. Um Chat GPT or some AI program to help generate that. So that's up there too. Um, on the Google Drive, uh, as of this afternoon around three PM, I had made comments on them as um. Suggestions and I think Gary Delpiano made some comments and I didn't see anyone else. So uh. I don't know if you've had a chance to look at them or not. Um. I I would appreciate if if you would look them over, make any suggestions. Uh rather than direct edits, just make suggestions. You you uh on the Google Drive, you just. Uh in the upper right hand corner, there's something we put it's uh um select edit or suggestions or something else.
Changes. Track changes.
No, no, not this is Google Drive. It's not Word.
Oh, Google Drive.
Yeah, so um just select suggestions and and then it'll it'll make the it'll take the suggestion as though it's an edit and then it'll put the comment over on the right on what you see. What's changing? And then we can go over that, I think, at the next meeting. Uh, is that acceptable to everyone?
Yeah, sounds good. Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll we'll go on that basis. And uh. That's it for the agenda, unless anyone has anything else.
I got nothing else. I already got my I got mine in. We're good.
Okay. I will entertain a mo- motion to adjourn.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Hi. I saw Josh put his hands up first.
No, 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 it's fine. Mike can have that. I'll I'll.
Okay, Mike, Mike. Motion and Josh seconded. Thank you so much. Uh, have a good month and we'll see you next month, either in person or via Zoom again.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.